We're gonna start our meeting.
Okay.
See that we have a forum here tonight and?
I'd like to make a recommendation to excuse Penny DeGarden and Vanessa Enriquez-Pimbalde.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Loos?
Yes.
Ms. Clever Jones?
Yes.
And I shall vote yes. Moving on. Adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Clever Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Loos?
Yes.
Dr. Dob?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance tonight is brought to you by our new CFO. Dr. Twistick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. 1.5 is reported closed session, and the board did meet on closed session on June 13th for a discussion of personnel agenda items. 1.6 is public comments. None? Thank you. A little bit? Okay. No public comments. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our report. And I am very pleased and happy to present to the board this report. As we prepare for the upcoming school year, which is like, don't tell Mike Smith this, but it's right around the corner. A few more things to finish up, right, Mike?
One or two.
Okay. We have a lot of important events and dates I want to share with you this evening. The new employee orientation is August 5th to the 9th. Get to have all our new people come and see our schools, our neighborhoods. Do they still take a bus around?
They do, and they stop for ice cream and skiers.
Nice. Tell me when. I'll join that group. Okay? We will host our summer graduation ceremony prior to our board meeting in August, that's Thursday, August 8th. Everybody is pleased to ask to be there because we want to welcome our newest graduates, right? Transition Day. We welcome the teachers back then, sorry, Monday, August 12th. Transition Day for kindergarten, 6th and 9th grade students is Thursday, August 15th, with the first day of school being Monday, August 19th. Of course, our annual Black and Orange Day celebration and Back to School Bash takes its place on Saturday, August 24th up at the Rittner High School. Our annual Hall of Fame induction ceremony will take place this 6:00 PM on Friday, September 20th. So write these things down. Your calendars fill up fast, I know. And on Saturday, September 21st, we will celebrate homecoming, have a parade that weekend at 9 o'clock, and we'll follow that up with a win over Pennville High School at Moore Field during the football game. Is that right? Did I say that accurately?
You said that.
Win over Pennville?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's in the books. It's gonna have to happen then. And that is my report. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kilbride?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. So, board members, the 2024 Rittner Hall of Fame announcement, it's slated to go out to the community on the 20th. I'm here to share it with you. Tonight, the committee met, and there are two Rittner alums going into the Hall of Fame, and then there's one lifetime achievement award recipient that will also be inducted. The inductees are, first person is Mr. Bob Courtney. Mr. Courtney's class 57, civic leader, successful businessman, who's helped to create life-changing opportunities for young people in the community. Excited for Mr. Courtney's induction. We also have Mr. Greg Ransom, class of 78, successful business and community leader who's known for his impressive and award-winning charitable endeavors that have changed the lives of countless people in the St. Louis area. His commitment to charity is through leading the Coaches vs. Cancer Initiative here in the St. Louis area. And we have one lifetime achievement award winner. That's Ms. Kathy Nickens. Ms. Nickens is a retired Rittner educator, teacher and administrator who made a positive impact on the lives of thousands of Rittner students, teachers, and the entire community. So, Dr. Thomas, it's shared. The event is 6:00 PM, September 20th, in the auditorium. Invitations will be pushed out from Michelle and Doug in the Community Service Department here early in the next month. The Hall of Fame was established in 1997 to honor graduates who have demonstrated outstanding professional accomplishments, civic involvement, and community service. At this point, there's 110 outstanding graduates of Rittner and then 12 lifetime achievement award recipients. The difference between Hall of Fame and lifetime achievement is the lifetime achievement award recipients did not graduate from Rittner High School. Look forward to learning more about our newest inductees fall and look forward to pushing out that message to the community on the 20th of July. Also, board members, in keeping with introducing new administrators to the board, we have a new member of the high school administrative team. I'd like to welcome Mr. Austin Ferguson to the front. Mr. Ferguson is coming to us from the Hancock Place School District, and I'll turn it over to Austin to share what he has to say.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you. How's it going?
Good, thank you.
Just wanted to kind of take a few seconds and talk to you about sort of my philosophy of education, a little bit about me as an individual, and my reflections over my transition into the district, the things that I've seen so far. In terms of things that I've seen so far, my transition's been wonderful, actually, from the interview process all the way up until current date. Everyone I've met has been a bright smiling face, which has been fantastic. Everyone's constantly asking me if I need anything or, you know, what's going on. So that welcoming presence has been fantastic. And then apart from that, just the community engagement and involvement that I've seen has been wonderful. I was able to attend a summit about a month ago. So being able to come here and see not only the leaders and teachers from our current district, but also neighboring districts come and share their expertise has been fantastic, knowing that we're on that journey towards standards-based instruction and assessment at the high school. I also think it's going to be something that's fantastic. As a teacher years ago, I ran my own classroom that way in my current building that I'm transitioning from to this position. We just made the switch over at the high school level, K-12, actually, so I assisted that process. So I'm happy to do it again. I think it would be fun and exciting. And then as far as the philosophy of education, I think it's important to remember that all students can achieve at all times. Oftentimes, it's easy for staff, family members, community members to have a student who is difficult and just see the difficulty in the student and lose sight of the student as a person. And I've really made it my effort, my whole reason of being in education, to try to push away from that and make sure that everyone is seen for not just what they do today, but what they could possibly do in the future, like what potential they have, and helping them tap into that potential so that they're able to grow, not just as a student, but also as a staff member. Like being able to find people on staff who have different potentials that they might not have leaned into yet and helping make sure that they have all the different tools that they need at their disposal, all the different trainings that they need at their disposal to become the best educators that they can be because ultimately, they're on the front lines every day with our students. We want to make sure that they are at the top of their game so that our students can do that as well. And so that has been something that I've noticed as I've been moving into the district, that that has also been a focus here. It was one of the main reasons why I applied for the position when it became available here at the high school. I have a number of different people who have worked with or near the district throughout the past. My wife works at SSD. She was placed at Rittner for three years, and she would come home every day and say, "If there's never an opening, you have to apply for it. You would love it there." And I'm like, "I really like where I am. I'm kind of good." And then finally, this one opened up. I was like, "You know what? Fine. I will go for it. I'll look into it a little bit further." I'm just very excited to make the transition.
Austin? Thank you for being here tonight. Board members, any questions for Mr. Ferguson?
Nope. Just excited to have you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Very excited. Mr. Ferguson talked a little bit about standards-based Hancock Place along with the Rittner School District, two districts leading the area in the implementation of competency-based learning. So very excited to get a practitioner of the work, somebody that can support the high school as they make this difficult transition. Very excited that Mr. Ferguson would be a part of Dr. Green's team. Thank you for being here, Dr. Ferguson.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the student representative report.
Do I need to stand up?
You can do whatever you want.
Do I have to sit like in the middle or begin?
No.
Just have everyone just sit. Um, so since it's like summer and school's not really going on, I've made my report a little bit more personal. And so the positives that I'm looking forward to for my senior year is the school dances, specifically the glow dance, because everyone just has more fun at the glow dance because it's more like a casual dance and everyone can just hang out. Um, I'm excited about the senior activities, like the senior sunrise and sunset. And then I'm really just excited about like being in my final year of high school and taking all of it as I can and not like wasting anything. But one thing I am nervous about is that I'm gonna be the first female in three generations on my mom's side to graduate, and I'm gonna be the first one to break the cycle of addiction.
Okay.
Dr. please write a report.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing about your adventures in your senior year. Okay, moving on to the MSBA report. I know Ms. Vanessa Enriquez-Pimbalde is not here, so we turn to our alternate.
That would be me? It's her.
I don't know, but someone's gonna do it.
It's okay, Dr. Thomas. If we could start with the video and then I'll give an update on the summer summit.
Welcome to the July edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's board report. We begin with a look at MSBA Summer Summit held in Branson June 24th and 25th. The summit began with a thought-provoking keynote presentation from generational expert Megan Johnson. Megan is a generational expert, speaker, and author. Being a Gen Xer herself, Megan knew that negative generalizations about generations were unfair, untrue, and hurtful. So she began researching organizations of all sizes to debunk generational myths and discover the most effective ways to solve differences on the way to finding generational diversity.
Because true generational diversity is not about excluding one generation to make another generation happy. True generational diversity is bringing the strengths of every generation onto your school board, into your work environment, into your own homes, to bring out the best in everybody.
The Summer Summit also featured an awards luncheon recognizing outstanding students such as the 2024 statewide Belcher Scholarship winner, Zach Shaki of Jefferson City. The luncheon was also an opportunity to celebrate board members who have achieved additional levels of board certification beyond the basic state requirement levels and have achieved the designation of advanced, master, or distinguished certified board member. At the conclusion of the summit, during the delegate assembly, Jonathan Russell of the Miojo School District was sworn in as president of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as vice president for the past year. He told board members attending the summit, "It's important to address and understand the challenges our schools are facing right now with one of his key focus areas being literacy education."
Literacy is the foundation of learning. Children who develop strong reading skills and writing skills early on are better equipped to understand complex subjects, excel academically, and pursue higher education and career opportunities. Reading not only impacts academic performance, but also mental health. Strong readers are more likely to have higher self-esteem and confidence. They can also participate more fully in civic and community activities, becoming informed and active citizens. Investing in literacy education is an investment in the future. We need to make sure our students are prepared to lead and maybe even lead as future school board members. To make that future a reality, though, we have to make sure our students are supported both in and out of the classroom.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Shelley Mantel of the Mountain View Birchtree School District and Vice President Paula Hubbard of the Bolivar R. I. School District. As the summit concluded, Dr. Mike Slagel, the superintendent of the Raymore Currier School District, recognized the outstanding contributions of outgoing MSBA President Ruth Johnson.
This is a bowl that was created by our students in one of our classes in elementary school. And the groovy thing about this bowl is that each one of these little spirals is created by the individual students. And together, they're put together, and the teacher then glosses it over and creates this beautiful masterpiece. This is symbolic of your leadership. You have the ability to see the potential, the gifts and the talents in each one of our students. And the way you lead, you bring it together so that something beautiful is created out of the individual pieces. On behalf of a grateful community and a superintendent who's very proud of you, congratulations and thank you for your service.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your or school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you could do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's position.
If it doesn't come back up, that's probably what I was gonna talk about too, so it's not.
We'll let you go.
Thank you. So I got a chance to attend the Summer Summit up in Branson this year. As they talked about the guest speaker, that was a good presentation just to help everybody kind of remember that, hey, no matter where you are in this space, you need to be able to relate to all generations. She gave some tips out as well. But one of the big takeaways for me was just keeping in mind about the ways that we try to are creating succession plans and are bringing in our younger constituents of the community to be a part of the board and/or participating in the board meetings. So she talked a lot about social media and what we're putting out there and then how we are building relationships individually at our schools with our families. So that was good information that she shared. The other session that I participated in was the panel of the diverse school board members. They had representation from Ladoo, Columbia. Oh, little graduation program. I can't remember all the representation. I apologize. But they really were talking about what they done in their districts to make sure that they were having inclusive practices in their curriculum with their educators to make sure that that's forefront and trying to make sure that's passed on throughout just not as a board member, but how they're holding their staff and their administrators accountable in those spaces as well. The other panel that I partic-- well, not panel, but session that I participated in was MSBA. I didn't realize that they actually have been doing some work around new board member education and training, but specifically for candidates. So there are some PowerPoint materials that they have out there, kind of like what we do. Everybody's kind of on that pathway of creating the pre-candidate forms and having that. But MSBA actually has a whole PowerPoint that helps people understand more about the depth of the work. So they were gonna send that out to individuals. The only challenge with it is that if you're not a member of MSBA, then you would have to get a login password and everything from the board secretary to get access to that PowerPoint. So we're trying to talk to them about like, if you really want us to be for pre-candidates, you need to make it more accessible. So there was some opportunity there. They were talking about the governance manual that they're working on. So MSBA is also working on a governance manual. I know we have one. I don't know if they've reached out to you or not, Dr. Kilbride. I know you said previously, some people have reached out. So seems like MSBA is recognizing that there's some opportunities for educational materials for, to help board members become more aware of what they are signing up for, if you will. So that was a good thing. Then the other session was around the Senate bill and how that's going to impact boards and school districts. They were talking about how that the plan is that potentially maybe next year or this upcoming year, that they will have to look at how are we going, how are school districts gonna fund all these different components that are in there that they're expecting school districts to be responsible for? And they're thinking they would like to have some thought partners in those spaces. So they're going to be reaching out to different constituents of board members to participate in some of that thought partner process as well as are encouraging board members to talk to their legislators around that and what, how that is gonna specifically impact their district, which I know we do that already, but if we need to have some thought partners around the funding components. The other piece too, as we always talk about going to these, getting the opportunity to really commune, if you will, with other districts that are locally to us. I will say that theme of the conversation did come up surrounding how do we do a better job of working together as boards, local boards, so that we can come together to try to address some of our centralized issues that we have that kind of go from one district to the next? So that was a common theme as well. So yes, Advocacy Day is, if we want to submit a position on any of the advocacy positions that are out there, that day is August 16th. And we need to have things submitted in that space. September 4th is when our Fall Regional Meeting is at St. Louis Public Schools. That's where it will be at this year. And then the Annual Conference is October 18th and 19th. I will tell you, participating in the delegate assembly, this was actually, I think, my first time I actually had the opportunity to do that. We only had 95 delegates that were there. So you think about that with the number of school districts that we have and the status of it, it's only 95 that were there. And that will conclude our report.
Did they speculate on why there weren't more delegates? Was it well, was the conference well attended, or?
No, it was not well attended.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the special school district report. Mr. Robbie?
I had a conversation with Dr. Kilbride just a little bit ago, just kind of through the grapevine, hearing some more people that have left and have saying, "Hey, I've gone to Parkway. I've gone to Rockwood." So I asked if we're seeing an increase in that number of us losing our SSD teachers too? And he said, "It's not up, but it is kind of on track for where we've been." We're gonna meet this probably next week with Angie and Dr. Kilbride and myself and start having some conversations because that is one of the big concerns with SSD is with all of the budget issue that we're not going to be having a mass exodus at North County schools to South and West. And so we need to, we need to stop some bleeding now. So we're gonna meet and have some conversations before and then take that back to governing council.
So it's like the leaving, like Rittner and going to Rockwood and things like that, do they really do just put in for a transfer?
My understanding, yes, they would just put in for a transfer. But we're seeing it and we're, I know that Fird floor has been seeing it. Riverview's been seeing it. And we just can't have our North County schools without SSD representation, so.
Okay. Keep us informed. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we'll move to our business agenda items. 3.1 is credit recovery regulations. So we turn to Dr. Bruce Green.
So, board members, Dr. Green is going to share, "We're working to turn a process into a regulation." Dr. Green has been at the forefront of this work. Excited to hear his presentation.
So, thank you and good evening, board members. Dr. Kilbride. Ms. Dr. Kilbride, I mentioned tonight I want to discuss a regulation that will be added to policy ICGD virtual courses. So as you all may know, the district utilizes two online platforms for students to earn credits, one being edgenuity and the other one is Odyssey, where students can earn credits, whether it's initial credit or they may recover credits due to failing a course. And looking at some data points over a period of years, it became clear to me as well as others that we needed to establish and implement clear processes and procedures to ensure that students earn credits appropriately and consistently across all users of the platform. So to that end, and recognizing the need for improvement, the four of us that got together to put some things in place, Dr. Stewart, Ms. Faust, Ms. Hahn, and I reviewed and defined some of our current practices to ensure that there was fidelity for both of these programs. So tonight, I want to highlight a few of those key guidelines as well as expectations. So for number one, prescriptive tests at Husky. It became clear to us in looking at students that may have to go to Husky for various reasons. If they go, say in October, they start at the school year with us in August, students would have to start over with their coursework via edgenuity. So we implemented it in place that students would be able to take a prescriptive test in edgenuity upon their arrival so they would not have to start over in their coursework. So prescriptive test kind of looks like this. There's 92 lessons for that course and students will have 92 questions that they can take. And if they get those questions correct, then those things are renewed from the lesson bank where students would be required to reassess that. So for movement of competency-based learning, so thought that would be a good idea. And then also there are pretests that are in there as well where there are 10 questions within that thing. I wanted to look at assignments for students without IAPs. Students without IAPs, accommodations must be complete, without IAP accommodations must be complete for all assignments and projects that were assigned. So no modifications to that coursework unless students had an IAP and the IAP indicated that students could have accommodations or modifications as appropriate. In some instances, there were substitute assignments that might be needed or noted. So we wanted to ensure that if assignments are substituted, that there was a rubric that was uploaded and that assignment had to be of equal rigor. And if it was not of equal rigor, they could not get full credit for that work. So expect what was expected. We want to make sure that we put in place quarterly meetings. So any person that's using edgenuity or Odysseyware will have a quarterly meeting to be determined by myself as well as others that we'll need to look at various students and to see how they're progressing and make sure that there's still, you know, fidelity to that program. Testing quizzes, accommodations, testing quizzes are accommodated only if it's in the IAP. For initial credit, we wanted to make sure that if a student was enrolled in edgenuity for initial credit, that that teacher, that end user either had a certification or directly consulted with a teacher with that certification. For students to enroll in courses, whether they had an IAP or not, whether it was credit recovery or not, it had to be approved by the building principal, the director over at Husky, after consultation with the councils. Wanted to make sure that the councils were involved to ensure that any course that's assigned to students were in line with the students' four-year plan. There's an approval form that is included that has to be signed off on before enrollment. Test attempts and reviews. So students have two attempts for topic tests and cumulative exams. And if they don't pass it after the first time, then they get a teacher review. And if they fail it after the second attempt, the teacher can assign specific units based on what's failed. Credit recovery courses is a big one. We wanted to make sure we were clear with this. And you'll hear some data points with students that graduated from summer school. For credit recovery, students can earn unlimited credit recovery courses, earn unlimited credit for credit recovery courses with monitoring to ensure completion. So there are some instances, if I fail multiple classes and I take a strict test, So there are some instances, if I fail multiple classes and I take a prescriptive test, to where a student could earn three credits, four credits, five credits for the different courses that they're enrolled in. So we didn't want to put a cap on that because we recognize that there may be varying circumstances that our students may work within. Edgenuity and Odysseyware, just wanted to make sure that if students utilize Odysseyware, which is not on a grade level, that it's denoted on the transcript, was a modified grade and then assessment program, which is a big one. So students can go at home and they can work on as much as they want to, but as it relates to those tests and those cumulative exams, those have to be taken at the school in the presence of a faculty member. Then to make sure that we are in line with everything, we wanted to look at permissions that were assigned. We did some data scrubbing, you know, and looking at the data, there were users in there that we wanted to make sure that were not in there maybe. Because at one point, all teachers had access and it was because of the pandemic. So a lot of teachers had access to it. So only those teachers that we didn't have it. So they have to be approved by the building lead administrator or rather the assistant superintendents. And at the end of each semester, then the lead administrator, administrator of that school or program will go in and remove those users that don't need to be in there anymore. Did that today at 5:00, right before I came over. So as of right now, the only people that are in there are the counselors, a few of us at central office, one teacher, and our two summers for summer weeks. And once they're complete, they will remove their access so that we can make sure that we're implementing both of these platforms. So that's really quick, but it's an absence of the work. And the intent behind it is just to make sure that all end users are using it in the same way so students can earn credits in the same way.
And as Dr. Green had shared in some of his words in the past around alternative options, we want that alternative options to be a support, not necessarily the destination. And so in our conversations, we're after a high level of fidelity. When credit recovery is necessary, we don't at all want it to be perceived as that we're moving fast and loose so that when students have the perception, if I'm not successful, I can just move quickly through credit recovery, whether it be Edgenuity or Odysseyware. That's why the level of detail that is in this regulation is there. It's kind of a safeguard and it's a message to students and families that credit recovery, if it's needed, it's a tool that's there. In a competency-based district, you don't need to wait an entire semester. You don't have to retake the entire semester if you've not been successful. You can go back to that prescriptive point and start from there and fill in the gaps. We're just after a high level of fidelity to that. So along with competency-based learning, it is not perceived as a watering down or an easier path to kids being successful. To that point also, just a little bit of an aside. All district staff at the beginning of the year required to take the policy review, which has gone up to take about five and a half or six hours with Dr. Lechance's work. We've gotten approval to take a competency-based approach to that as well, where if staff members can test out and pass each of the quizzes around those policy reviews, they can test out to start and they can grab back a good amount of time. The liability piece of that is do people know the work? And thus far, Mike, 75 teachers have already completed the required policy review. They've been able to go directly to the assessment, pass the assessment with 80% success. This is a similar, I see parallels between that approach and this approach. It's here if you need it, and we're just trying to get higher levels of consistency. And so board members, with regulation, regulations are attached to a policy, IGCD. The policy was approved by the board. This just takes that policy into greater detail, does not require board approval. So we just wanted to get this in front of you tonight for a more thorough explanation.
Are you anticipating any resistance with the previous additions, or?
I think always when there's change, there may be some. But we've done enough work with it to where people understand why. And again, just ensure that there's fidelity to the process. You know, we wanted to make sure that those end users don't find themselves in situations where they're doing something that they should not be doing. So that will be the purpose of those quarterly meetings, to have those conversations with all of the end users. I won't wait until the quarter. At the high school, I'll be with them, those people that we use right at the beginning of the school year to make sure that it's there. A lot of the teachers were aware of most of what's in here. We've added some things, so we've refined it some. We've added some things to it to make sure that it's clear and a little more concise for people to supervise.
I agree with Dr. Green. There was also a bit of tension this past year around this topic. A question would come up of, you know, a student was not successful in a 16-week semester, but yet the student got focused for four days or five days and was able to complete course content. So, you know, there was the perception out there that, you know, the experience was being watered down or, you know, only the minimum number of whatever was being given to a child so we could pass him or her through. This just outlines clearly what the expectations are.
And being a prescriptive test, I mean, you know what you know. And if I know it, I don't have to do the lesson work for it. So there are some students that will finish a course, some of them others.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you make it up to their?
Okay, the next business item up is 3.2, and that's our personnel recommendations. And with that, Dr. Lechance.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm here to present items 1 through 47 of the personnel report. Open any questions or comments you may have and ultimately asking for your approval tonight.
I am just going to say, and I have brought this to Dr. Kilbride, I know it's been discussed, but I am going to say that I am going to vote yes on item number five. I am not, at this point, from information that's been shared with me from other individuals, I still am not completely comfortable with item number five. I think we dropped the ball there, but I'm going to use Dr. Kilbride's phrase of know better, do better in the future, I hope, and I expect that we do better.
May I have you talk about that offline if you want?
Okay. I think number seven tells us, people that leave us to pursue items when they come back home, they come back to Ritten.
Sorry?
We'd welcome this individual back to us and choose a crats?
Crats.
I'm very excited for number 28 through 47. Can you tell a little bit more of what that would be, or?
Sure. That is our, that was part of our retention effort in the district. A few years back, we began to give a $1,000 annual stipend for staff members who could, through an assessment, show that they were, I believe, written in Spanish so that they could communicate, help us communicate with students and families who are Spanish-speaking. And so that's an annual approval that we ask for a little further stipend for the year.
I feel like it's bigger than.
It does. It continues to grow. I actually, there were even new staff members who we have interviewed and have, the board's already approved. They're working this summer to pass the assessment to get that stipend as well.
That's the Spanish language classes being taught by a Ritten High School teacher. We had a post out there on social media, you know, so there's, you know, it is about better serving students, but also, you know, one of the carrots that's out there too is that $1,000 stipend every year.
Looks like we're going to have a good amount of staff for our community guard camp as well.
So thinking about, looking at number three is, that's who I think it is. That one, I believe, has had great, some good relationships up there. And as I think about that particular location, what are we doing with the, because there seems to be a lot of turnover, changes in that particular location. So what are some of the things that we're doing to kind of help offset that?
So we have posted and are in the process of interviewing an additional staff member for that location in a SEL safety position. And we have some people who are in the pools of interviews who we feel pretty strong in. That specific position was one that we were considering as, as something that we would consider as part of our drawdown of staff because it was added through SFR. And so we found out in June that the individual was actually pursuing a master's program and was going to be, you know, wanting to drop back to a part-time position. And we were working to make that happen. And then ultimately, they found another opportunity that they chose to do otherwise. So right now, our plan for that location is really identify another SEL safety individual for that building. We hope to bring that to the board for approval like the next board meeting.
I have one more question. Would number four actually be able to do dual enrollment at?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
Captain, yeah, the high school?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve personnel recommendations 1 through 47 as presented. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Hearing that, Paul, vote. Mr. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton? Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
I shall vote yes, sir.
Thank you.
And how many more staff members?
So we are fully staffed with our teaching positions right now. We are looking at, we need to add some food service staff. We need nine part-time cook uppers right now and one cook. So it's 10 positions, which is somewhat typical to where we're at about this time. And we'll work to add those positions. We're looking for one evening custodian. We have three social-emotional TA positions that we're looking to fill. One at Hague, one at Marvin, one at Marion, and one that's a SEL position that I just mentioned. That is support staff.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next business item is 3.3, which is board member comments. Invite any board member that has anything to bring to us? Nothing? Well, I'm going to break that, move on then. Yeah, yes, I can be quiet sometimes. Wait till next, wait till next month. Consent agenda items, ladies and gentlemen. Consent agenda items, 1.4, 1 through 4.8.
I'd like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
No question?
On 4.3, may I ask where those are going to be placed at? Do we know where they're going to be placed at?
So no, Ms. Hahn will have that information and I can put that in the Friday memo tomorrow. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just wondering where they were going to be placed at.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 1, 4.1 through 4.8 as recommended. Second?
Motion, we have a second. Let's vote. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, consent agenda items approved. Moving on to closed session, 5.1.
A motion that we move into closed session for State Statute 610-021. Second?
I'll vote, Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. We're in closed session.